Good evening. Welcome to the public budget meeting, April 29th, 6 o'clock start. Roll call please.
Mr. Costa.
Mr. Costa. Mr. Fiocchi?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Medio?
Here.
Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva?
Here.
Ms. Spinelli?
Here.
Mr. Alrich?
Present.
Mr. English?
Here.
And welcome, Mr. Silva.
Thank you.
In compliance with the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has caused notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the Press of Atlantic City, Nuestro Comunidad, Vista Bueno, the Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, please rise for the flag split. At this time, I will turn this meeting over to Mr. Merkley for a budget overview.
I'm going to do the presentation from the public podium.
Good evening, everyone. The purpose of the meeting tonight is the public hearing on the 2019-20 proposed school budget. The Board of Education approved it March 13th. It then went to the County Office of Education, and we did get our formal approval from the county. I want to say it was April 18th, 17th or 18th. It's at the end. It's at the end of this presentation. You'll see it. But we did get it formally approved from the county. So the purpose tonight is for this hearing to present the budget for the public. The public can come up and make comments on the proposed budget. And then I believe we're going to have another meeting, which is Wednesday, May 1st, for a second public hearing, at which time the Board will take action to formally approve a final budget for the 1920 school year. This presentation tonight is a slimmed-down version of the one that you were shown on March 13th. It basically has the same financial data within it. I did remove some of the graphs. They were kind of duplicates of the data provided. So in this presentation tonight, we're going to review the board-approved tentative budget, review the anticipated revenues, current and historical, review of anticipated appropriations, current and historical, review of the annual tax levies, current and historical, informational slides, I think I have one or two of those, currently proposed reductions and anticipated costs, both of those combined, and then select state budget slides, and at the end, I believe, is just a snapshot of the approval from the county. Revenue. When you start making a budget, the very first thing you do is you want to tie to revenues. So revenues drives everything. So as a school district, revenues drive the bus. Right here, you can see a five-year snapshot of revenues. The three located on the right-hand side of the slide are actual. They're audited. The one all the way to the left is proposed. Second to the left is the budget year we're in right now. So you can see from a revenue standpoint, we have in the general fund $167,003,67. And if you look across the bottom, you'll see what the general fund has looked like over five years. Looks relatively stable. There were a couple. Current year we're in right now, as you can see, is a little bit larger. One thing that's interesting, if you look at state aid, it's very consistent, but it's been down the last two years. It seems that as they redo their S2 funding formula, money's being taken from some districts and being allocated in other places. It's a little bit of our issue. Tax levy listed here, which is another slide, but I'll just go into it briefly. This $24,703,562 represents a 4% increase, which is 2.2 cents. Appropriation trends. There's three-year snapshot. The one on the right's audited. The middle columns, the year we're in now, and then the left column is proposed. You can see programming's fairly consistent. Special education's fairly consistent. Support services, tuition, administrative. Facilities and plant, you can see that's down. And when we built this budget, we did lean heavily on facilities and plant. And I just want to caution the Board that that's something that shouldn't and will not continue. They probably, of the $14 million we were short, I would say they made up from facilities probably 2.6 million of it. That's just off the top of my head. I would have to go into the numbers exactly, but facilities are down significantly. Security and grounds are consistent. Transportation, pretty consistent. We're reviewing that now. We are going to do a few things this year transportation-wise. Employee benefits and insurance. We're fortunate on employee benefits and insurance that Vineland recently joined the Health Insurance Fund. It's the Southern Coastal Regional Health Insurance Fund. And they've been consistently 5% or below, which is great to hear. Prescription normally is a larger number. I think this year, the employee benefits came in at 2%, if I'm not mistaken, which is phenomenal. Student clubs and sports are consistent. Capital outlay, that 1.9 that you see there was, I think it was entirely in the middle column, was facilities. Some of it may be equipment, but I believe the majority of that number is facilities. This is just a pie graph of the appropriations in the previous one. As you can see, on the upper right is regular programming. The orange on the right is special education programming. The gray on the bottom is support services. Basically, more than half of this pie chart is in the classroom. That's the purpose of it, to show you that the majority of the money does reach the classroom. One should note that that big, large chunk on the upper left, employee benefits and insurance, that's a big number. If you look at that number, $39 million, that's a large number. So when we get increases that are only 2%, we like to see that. Tax comparisons. I should have did this 1920 on the top. I did it reverse. It goes from 1415 on the top, and at the very bottom is 1920. So 1920 is the proposed year. You can see the assessment. If you look at the previous year, 1415, and you come down to 1920, you'll see that the valuations are actually down in the city. They're climbing up in the last year, but they're down from five years ago. And why do I bring that up? Because when you're down in assessment, the amount of money you raise per penny is less money. And that's important, because that's how we fund the schools. Average home is basically consistent. The middle column, Vineland School District Taxes Raised, $24,703,562. That's what we're proposing tonight. That's what we're asking for the approval on Wednesday. It's a total school district tax rate of .644. They actually carried out on the state site. It goes out a little farther than that. I truncated it. It's basically a 2.2 cents for the average cost of $35.12 to the average owner that has an assessed value of $159. If I didn't mention it, that's a 4% proposed tax increase. This is just a bar graph of the previous data on the other slide. Just shows that we have been making an effort, however so slight, it's still an effort to recognize that the taxpayers are funding a portion of the school expenses. Balancing increased costs and revenue losses. Revenue losses are the main thing here. Fund balance reduction. This is kind of why we're in the situation we're in right now. The state, one should note that the state only allows you to keep 2% of. When you audit your previous year's books, and the state comes out and it says, "Well, whatever's left in your budget, you're allowed to keep 2%." Anything over that 2%, you have to put in next year's budget. And there's creative ways to do that, so this doesn't happen. If you use all of that money into operational costs, then you have to replace it every year. And that's kind of why we're in the situation we're in. We have to look out of a new way of allocating funds that are left over in budget years. So let's, to be honest, when you have $167 million general fund budget, you're not going to spend every penny, and nor should you. Increase in salaries. This is just an estimated number. That's why it's got a little pound sign there. Even if they were 2% to 2.5%, whatever they come in at, most of them are unknown at the moment. Based on what our salary load is, you're looking at a reoccurring cost every single year of that $2.2 million. Every year. The increase in health benefits of $1.5 million every year. So if you look at that slide, $3.7 million. $3.7 million is going to increase every single year. And how much is that 4% tax levy increase? $950,000. What does that mean? You're short $2.7 million every single year. I'm just bringing that to everyone's attention. That's here. That's what we need to work on. Now, we're going to get into some of the parts of the budget that aren't so good. Administrative and support cuts, maintenance cuts. I'm not going to go into each one of them. They're all listed here. But as you can see, there's a number of positions, and you're going to see multiple slides that have all this negativity on it. So we want to make sure we begin to move past the negativity in this year's budget. We want this to be an off-year. We don't want this to be the precedent for years going forward. But there's a lot of individuals on here that are being proposed to be reduced. I'm not going to read every single one of them. Maintenance likewise is sharing the load. Additional personnel reductions. Transportation, we are moving forward with those cuts. On the right-hand side, you'll see a lot of them that are happening within the schools. This is one slide that came directly off of March 13th. You'll see I put a red line through the elementary instrumental lesson teachers. Between March 13th and today, there've been a couple meetings of the Finance Committee and the Board, and we were able to reallocate money from rerouting transportation in order to save this program. So in addition to the two teachers, it's the elementary school band also. It's everything associated with music in the elementary schools. That's what the Board and Finance was able to achieve over the last month and a half. There's one other item that we're going to get to. Proposed non-salary reductions. Food service contribution has another line through it. I'm not going to read every slide here. I will touch on the red line. Food services operated in a separate fund. It's actually not included in $167 million. And the requirement from the state is food service, which is cafeteria, cafeteria operations of the school, has to break even, has to be in the black. Can't run in the red. Every year, Vineland's running the red. I think the audit this year showed, I don't remember the exact number, but I want to say it's about $217,000 in the red. And every year, you go through a mid-year budget review, in which they review certain categories of employees. They look at square footage to custodians. They look at aides being utilized that aren't in special education classrooms. They look at food service operations, and this is something that's been flagged. So in order to rectify that ship, we're going to need to do a reduction of food service. It's just not as drastic as what was originally proposed. Originally proposed was it was all going to be privatized. But after initial meetings and coming up with the number that was necessary, there are still reductions in food service. They're just not as drastic. The ending number, I believe, and I can't give you the exact number only because we have to wait for civil service to give their seniority, I believe it's about 25. And there's about 80 total district employees. And I think overall, there's probably 130 employees that are actually, or not all employees, 130 people that work in food service, 80 being school district employees, another 50 that are actually SEDESCO employees. So the 25 that we're going to reduce in order to bring the food service program into the black, will have an opportunity to apply and work for SEDESCO directly. The charter school, I do want to bring that to everyone's attention. The way charter schools work is they give you an estimated enrollment number, and that estimated enrollment number is what you have to start paying them every year. And sometimes, and there's no room for negotiation. That's the way it is. That's the way the law's written. Well, they estimate, and they estimate like now for next year. And they don't always come to fruition what their estimates are. So what happens is you end up paying on students who don't go. So this year, there's a reduction by that, because their numbers came in 12% lower than what they had in the prior year. So that's why you see $1 million coming back to the district here. I touched earlier on facilities bearing the brunt of some of these cuts. You'll see here, painting and maintenance, right there, $600,000 in addition to that 1.9 that you saw on the previous slide. It was pretty close. I said it was about 2.5 or 2.6 million of the total, 13.9 or $6 million deficit. You'll see some of the other savings that we're trying to achieve here. I'm not going to read every single one of them. There's plenty on there. Non-salary reductions, we're actually looking at it a different way. We actually bring substitutes into the school district. They are outsourced already. That's nothing new. I think we're going to limit it and provide a different limit on how subs are being utilized and how principals are able to provide coverages in a different way. Athletics made some small contributions in some cuts, and so did co-curricular club Proposed non-salary increases, these are items that actually cost us more money. Security, substitutes, the bleed-out from students that are Vineland residents that are going to vocational education opportunities in charter schools. It should note that they don't just go to the local vocational school or the local charter school. They go to many places. There's many students who go out of this county that we pay tuition on. And this, by the way, this is just the increase for next year. The total amount of that's in the millions of how much we pay in tuition for students that attend other schools. Special education 101 nurses, cost there. Transportation contracted services increases. Lease purchase of special education vehicles. Outsourced computer technicians. We rebid that. It did come in higher. That number's actually a good number. This is the last slide of the evening. This is just the approval of the budget, just from the county office saying that our proposed, that you approved on March 13th, school budget has been reviewed and approved by the county office. That concludes my presentation tonight. I did eliminate some of the graph and bar slides from the previous presentation. I'll take any questions now, if the Board has any questions of me, before you want to turn it over to the public for public comment. Thank you.
With the revenue proposals in the budget, I know there's been some conversation among the Board members that the school properties that we're trying to sell have been actually entered in as a revenue. Where do we stand on that portion? Because that can adversely affect the budget.
Yeah, that's a good question. The three properties that we did build in for a total of, I don't know the exact number, but it was either 2 or 2.2 million. We did get $550,000 of it already with the sale of Lofter. We're in negotiations with Coney right now. We did advertise it one time. We didn't get any bidders on it. However, the way it was built, we recognized Lofter from surplus this year, and we allocated it in next year. We do have until June 30th of 2020 to effectuate the sales of this property. I am looking at the Oak and Main. I'm actually, through facilities, we've asked them to do a few things for us, because we have advertised it, I think twice. Did we advertise it twice? We've advertised it twice. So we're actually looking now to see if it's possible that because of environmental issues that may be in the building, if it's more cost-effective for us to possibly demolish it and offer it as just a property. So this way, anyone, prospective buyer, might be more interested. And additionally, the City of Vineland owns a piece of property next to Oak and Main. If we were to negotiate with the city to try and offer the sale of it as a larger property, might be more interesting to a prospective buyer. But you're correct that there's a bit of money that's in this budget that if we don't get by June 30th of 2020, we do have an issue. That being said, we'd have to cut another $1.5 million out of it. So we better work hard. If anybody has any, if anybody plans on speaking about the budget, if you can fill out one of these sheets, so at least we have the proper spelling of your name, thank you. I think they're in the back.
At this time, if anyone from the public would like to come to the podium to discuss anything concerning the budget, you can do so, just strictly the budget at this time, and you have five minutes.
Well, I'm going to call those that have filled out forms. First one would be Cindy Weber.
My name is Cindy Weber. I'm here as a parent, and I'm very concerned about the proposal to cut an entire child study team from the 2019-20 budget. My son has been enrolled in the special education program in Vineland since first grade. He's now in seventh. Every year, I see staff struggling to meet his IEP with less and less resources. In fact, I, as a parent, regularly purchase books he needs because there aren't enough for a class set. This year, my son has been without an in-class resource teacher for language arts since November. It's almost May. It's been harder and harder to see him meeting his goals in a lot of places he isn't. This year, we've had several IEP meetings to discuss his challenges, one that included a possible school change. I see the dedication and the effort put forth by these staff members. However, they are only human, and it is unrealistic to expect the students not to suffer with cuts of this nature. These staff are absolutely critical to the success of some of Vineland's most vulnerable students. Losing them will mean significantly less time for each identified special education student, in addition to increased wait times for initial evaluations. There are approximately 1,900 special education students enrolled in Vineland public schools. Referrals grow every year and staff don't. This year, there are 24 case managers to handle about 1,900 students. Next year, you're proposing 21 to handle a number of at least that size. Child study team members are highly trained with skill sets that are not easily found outside of the school system in this area. I know. I've looked. If these staff are not replaced, the most vulnerable Vineland's childrens will be the ones to feel this. I know I won't be the only one coming up here, asking you not to cut this or not to cut that. However, nine staff members from special education is horrifying. Four child study aides, a special education teacher, and four 504 aides. These staff are what bridge the gap for my son and many others to receive an education that is useful to him. I am frightened to think of what next year will bring. Thank you.
Next, we have Nicole McBride.
My name is Nicole McBride. I'm a divorced, single mother of four children. I am not well-off. I'm just a hard-working, self-employed mother that wants the best for her children. I have three children that attend the Vineland public school system. I have one daughter that is an honor roll student with advanced courses at Wallace Middle School and has been playing the flute for four years. I have a daughter that attends Johnstone, and it is her second year in the AMSA program in sixth grade. I also have a son at Dane Barcy Elementary School that, due to health conditions, causes him to have a learning disability and has an IEP. So the budget cuts proposed may affect one or more of my children in more ways than just one. I am here representing some of the AMSA parents that have been meeting. The parents and their children have some concerns about the future of this program and that our children have committed to and are sacrificing for. First, we would like to say thank you. Thank you for the AMSA program that gives the students of the Vineland public school system that are trying to excel in areas of math, science, and STEM, to be competitive academically and reach their full potential. It also shines some positive light to Vineland, because other districts across New Jersey are taking notice and even willing to pay for their children to join the program. So from the AMSA parents, we are happy about this program. We know that you have a big undertaking finding Vineland in a multimillion-dollar deficit and which you're being held responsible to fix. We do not envy your position. We know some changes need to be done to make up for this shortfall. All we are asking is a seat at the table, so that we can help you ensure this program is sustainable and that the children that started this program- is sustainable and that the children that started this program have the opportunity to finish this program and to ensure incentives promised to the AMSA students of Vineland Public School System is kept. We do not want the Vineland Public School losing children to other schools due to school choice and Vineland still footing the bill for transportation. What other changes, whatever changes were going to be made, we feel we need to decide the long haul. We cannot have our children's education up in the air every time the budget comes up. We need sustainable changes, not a little this year and then when it comes up again, there's more cutbacks and more cutbacks until the children are left with feeling, why did I sacrifice and commit if we cannot keep what was proposed to them if they stayed with the program? I need to be honest, a lot of parents did not even bring their children today because it's really stressing them out. Some of our children are really ready to throw in the towel because the uncertainty is too much. Their children deserve to know exactly what they are committing to. This statement comes straight from the Vineland Public School website. We recognize that a quality educational experience is the result of a strong partnership of parents, teachers, and the community. So we are here. Help us help you by allowing us a seat at the table to help come up with solutions with the parents of the students in the program. I know from personal experience, my son to be successful with his IEP, I must have a seat at the table. I meet at least two times per school year to see what is working and what is not so his plan can work for him. When you're talking about cutting funds to a program that Vineland Public Schools committed to, it is very important to have their parents at the table to ensure the children's best interest in education lines up with the budget. We just want to help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Ronald Walker.
My name is Ronald Walker. The last time we were here, I asked three questions. How did we get here? How long we knew we were here? But just with this proposal, I believe we got some answers to that. And who was responsible for getting us here? Well, Mr. Albrecht said that some of the board was responsible as well as some of the administration as well. I understand the parent that just came up with the AMSA program and I believe that if the children are smart, they'll be smart wherever they go. I had two, I had all three children that were honorable students, honorable students. The AMSA program was not even in existence. Two of them are in college, one's getting ready to graduate and start graduate, moving on for physician assistant. My daughter's in top of her class at Rutgers University without this program. But I also want to know with this program, years ago, in 1954, it was Brown versus the Board of Education, which was a big civil rights movement, but also said that education which should be equal. It says that of the cornerstone of the civil rights movement and helped establish a precedent that separate but equal education in all services were not fact equal at all. I wonder if all of our students are getting the same education. Also, another problem that I have, no disrespect to any administrator, but we have over 52 administrators in the district that makes either close to 100,000 or over, majority makes over 100,000 a year, but yet we did not see a lot of cuts that came to that. I just want to say that the departments that you want to cut don't make anywhere near 15, 20. Some of them don't even make 10,000 a year. So I wonder how is this going to affect to you, to some of you? It may not, 10,000 may not be a lot, 15 may not be a lot, or even 20,000 may not be a lot. But it could be a major decision or a life crisis for some of the departments that you're willing to cut. Just remember this, did we check out for the benefits? I just heard the proposal about the benefits. I personally called the state myself to find out what would happen if we went through state benefits. It is possible that we could save money if we would bid out approximately benefits. We could possibly save about 10,000 a year. I don't know if we talked about, if anyone talked about that. I also checked out the state about, let's just not accept what the state does, but who is fighting? Millville got over $300,000 on top of their budget, school budget, annual budget. Bridston got $4 million on top, extra on top of their annual budget, but yet Vineland did not get anything. I wonder what would happen if we would just break the rules and stop accepting what the state does and stand up to the state. Third of all, there is a program through the federal government of the Department of Education. If a school district is in a crisis, they can reach out to the federal government and let them know what is going on. I think I did mention that to Mr. Frye a while ago, and I wonder if any of these actions have been taken. We must not just accept, but who's willing to stand up? This is a life decision that you have to make. And just remember, just because it looks good on black and white, anything looks good on paper, but doesn't mean it's a true reality of the facts. I say this to you, let's not become a district of the half and half-nots, but what happens if we would break the rules and say, you know what, this is what the state says, but this is what we're going to stand up? Because quantity doesn't always mean quality. And I heard if it doesn't affect the classroom, but let me tell you this, for those aides and stuff that work on the buses that see that the kids get to school safely before the classroom, whether you go through an outside program, are they going to know the facts of how to hook up a five hornet or a five-piece hornet? Are they going to know the facts of if a child has a seizure on the bus and what needs to be taken? So in all of these cuts, I hope we are looking at safety measures and not just not the quantity. Because at the end of the day, we say the children matters, but I think they should matter from the bus stop to the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I don't have any more yellow sheets. If anyone would like to speak on the budget, if you can fill out the yellow sheet or if you have one out there, I'll take it now.
Good evening. Suzanne Morello, Canterbury Lane in Vineland. It's nice to see this many people at a budget hearing. But I'm here before you tonight to say that all nine board members, and welcome Mr. Silva, have to do their job. You need to declare that you, you need to be able to evaluate this superintendent. You need to be able to set goals. Because at a meeting not that long ago, we heard, three years ago, there was a $6 million deficit. Two years ago, it was 8 million. This year, it's 14 million. That doesn't happen in a vacuum. Board members are supposed to make sure that the money is spent properly. There are just too many things that people just look up and say, oh, I didn't know that, or there's no public discussion. The public does not know what is going on based on these meetings. It is crickets. It is silence. There are people on cell phones during meetings. I do not know what that's about other than a potential violation of the sunshine law. You need to declare a doctrine of necessity and get this ship back on course. Each one of you sitting up there is responsible for the shortfall. The determination of what is a need versus what is a want needs to be clearly, clearly defined here. I just, I don't understand what has been going on. I don't think the public does. There's not a person in this city that doesn't want the best education for our students. But you really have to ask the question, why are so many kids going to the charter schools? Why are so many kids going to the choice schools? What happened to Vineland being one of the premier districts in South Jersey with the programs that are offered? We have the same staff. Our staff really shines in 95% of the circumstances. The other five, you always have people who need to maybe step it up a little bit. But that should be happening with the supervisors. What is going on? It starts at the top. And if central administration is spending money on things that aren't appropriate or aren't judicious or whatever, that is your job to understand that and to take care of that and to know what's going on. It's very disappointing as a former board member to sit through meetings and have people say yes or no, and that is the sum total of their involvement. It's worse than disappointing. It's almost criminal. Every board member should be looking in the mirror and saying, what do we need to do to make this better? Some of the things that have gone on in the past 18 months just don't make any sense at all. So I hope you all take this seriously. You cannot continue having $14 million shortfalls. Look around. People aren't happy. Vineland is not the wealthy community it once was, but it's a community of people who want the best for the students and the schools. So it's your turn to step up and get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morello. Mr. DeSanto, just have a quick question for you concerning, this is the public hearing. We can, we can exchange in dialogue with the public, correct?
Yes. This is not board, this is not public comment. That's discretionary and according to your bylaws, you allow only comment. But this is mandated by law and it can be in exchange.
Yes. Ms. Morello, I just want to answer some of your questions because I know you're a seasoned veteran when it comes to the whole process. I too was asking the same questions. That's why I decided to come back after being away for two years. And it is the board's president, the board president's job to make sure that a lot of what you were stating up there happens. And I inherited a board that did not do a self-evaluation last year. I inherited a board that did not do a superintendent's evaluation last year. I inherited a board that did not set any district goals. I inherited a board that did not set any goals for the superintendent. And those type of things are exactly what drives the bus. I can tell you that moving forward, we are having our retreat on the 15th of May, which is a Wednesday. It is a 5:30 start. And historically, it's really been the board members hashing it out, having some good discussion. But I don't believe the discussion should be the generic student achievement as we seem to always have as the top thing on our list. That is a gimme. That should be happening day to day. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. DeSanto, but during that retreat, that is also open to the public, correct? In my six years previous, I have never witnessed one member of the public sitting and being, being present for something like that. But sometimes that perception, when board members sitting there, working at that type of a retreat, when you're working amongst yourselves, it's one thing, but when you feel the pressure, the actual people that put you in these seats, I would love to see some people show up to see exactly how a retreat is run. I believe that the retreat really helps me get the flavor of what this board is. I've been back for four months, so I definitely, as you said, Ms. Morello, I know exactly what's happening. And it's a snowball, but you have to dissect it carefully, that's for sure. Because I have, I'm going to hear a lot of questions tonight and say this tonight, but again, with everything we say, we need to know what else we're cutting and that solution, I need more solutions than the answers. I can tell you that not one board member said anything about closing an AMSA program, which we are all, are all very fond of. The question happens is when I come back on a board like this, I start looking at the top five expenditures, which ones we can physically attack. A lot of people question the turf, but you can't rip that up. A lot of people question this building, but we can't move back to Plum Street. That stuff has happened. So I had looked at something as simple as a new program that is very successful. I don't think one board member sitting up here will question the importance of the AMSA program. As Mr. Walker said, his kids did not benefit from an AMSA program, nor did mine, but they are very successful in the colleges that they went to. I think that every student deserves a fair chance, but I want you to realize that no board member said anything about closing it. We had asked some questions concerning possible ideas of tweaking it. Does it need to be at a Johnstone school that the functional capacity is 649 students and we currently have roughly 200 there? Is that getting your biggest bang for your buck? We all, in today's times, have had to come up with ways to do more with less in our own households. So this is just a giant household that we are trying to get control of. I need you to understand my point with the AMSA program, and it really came from me, a guy coming in from the outside, asking a simple question, what is the cost? Can we do it eighth through 12th grade at the high school setting? Never did we say we were going to close that. When I hear that the students are stressing out, I don't know where the students are getting that type of information. So if indeed the students are stressing out, they should be stressing out because of the stress of being a successful program like that versus are we going to close it? We're not going to close that program unless we get backed against the corner. That serves less than 1% of our student population. And did we segregate that group in the one building? I don't know. I haven't got that answer to my question yet. So we're at the very early stages, but I can respect Ms. McBride when you come to the podium and say you want to be part of that solution because that's why I'm here as well. And I will entertain a lot of discussion like that because again, when we look at that 1% of our population, we don't want to lose them either, but we also have to look at that 99% of the population that needs to be addressed as well. So through that process, I'm probably, I don't want to talk too much out of school here, but this is one of those few opportunities that I can engage in that conversation with each of you because I want you to understand, no one is happy with this budget. And no one is happy with the $8 million that is rolling our way next year. And that's just a flat number. So everything we discuss now, if it doesn't happen this year, there's a good possibility that's going to happen next year. But through better community involvement, you might be telling us that one thing that we maybe missed, two, three, four things that we might have missed. None of us are perfect up here, but I will always welcome the voice at the podium and more community involvement if indeed we need to have. I wish, as the AMSA community comes out and supports that small group, that 1%, that that 60% of those students that aren't going to college, that really don't have a career path or a career readiness, that that same passion is being involved in their household, which possibly isn't. So remember, when we're making these decisions and these cuts, it is not a personal thing. It is what we think is best for the overall population, and I hope you understand that. Ms. Morello, I hope I answered some of your questions concerning, I know that you feel about retreats like I do. You probably should have one a quarter because that's your checks and balance system to make sure it is happening and things are getting done versus yearly. So I can only tell you that come the 15th, it is the start to a process that was not here for 14 months, to my knowledge. So that's the best I can do with that. I open the podium now to anyone else as well.
Vicki Miller, Vineland. I'd like to talk about the charter school. We have children that go to the charter school and they come back, and we've already paid for them to be in the charter school, and we get nothing back. I heard it's state regulation, but I don't think it's right. And I bet most of our taxpayers don't know that. AMSA, I think it's great, but Johnstone could fit, VOTEC. Why do we send to VOTEC? Why don't we get that technical schooling in here? I'm sure you could have teachers come here and teach our children to not go into college and want to do a trade. We have that big school. I don't see a reason why we don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Do we have anyone else this evening?
Good evening, Mr. English, Dr. Guccio, and members of the board. My name is Kim Cottis Potty and I reside in Vineland, New Jersey. To say why I wanted to say to To say what I wanted to say tonight, I would have had to speak twice, so I decided to wait until the end to speak about everything. First, I would like to commend those of you who supported the naming of the Sergeant Dominic Pillen Middle School. Coming from a long line of family members who served in the military, which included four uncles who served in the Navy and Army during World War II, one of which was killed and buried in France, my dad who served in the Air Force, my father-in-law in the Marines, and my husband, thirty years in the Air Force and Air Guard. I was humbled and honored to be a part of it and participate in that dedication ceremony. Running around and making sure the Rangers, the families and the veterans all got special VIP treatment, I was able to speak with several Rangers and other veterans who attended the ceremony. I can't tell you how much they appreciated being able to be there to support one of their own. Whether they were Army, Navy, Air Force, or Marines, there was a brotherhood that they shared, a closure for many, and a wonderful tribute to a man who died defending our country. That day was a great day for the district, along with the city of Vineland, a day that should be treated as such. It's a day we probably won't ever see again, a day I soon won't forget. To those of you who supported this, thank you. While sitting on the board for three years, I know how hard the budget process is. We didn't have a fourteen million dollar deficit, but we did have budgets that increased from year to year. I'm sure most of you don't want to see any loss of jobs, let alone programs or cuts for students, but unfortunately, you know that is inevitable and although this is the superintendent's recommended budget that you vote on, no matter how it goes, you as board members will get the brunt of any heat should any type of loss occur. So I would like to thank you for serving on the board and wish you luck. With that being said, please think long and hard about who and what you will be impacting the most with the cuts and job losses that are being proposed. Our principals and teachers are already being pushed to the limit, most going the extra mile to make sure their classes are getting the best education possible, but it doesn't stop there. I know many administrators, teacher, and support staff go that extra mile to make sure the students, for example, who come with no coats are provided with one somehow. When they don't have pencils or paper, they make sure the students have them. And when they come to school hungry, they feed them. Now, is that their job? I don't think so, but they do it. When I heard that many basic skill jobs were on the chopping block, it broke my heart. Why are our basic skill students being sacrificed? I'm a little confused. I understand we need the AMSA program and that's just as important, but why are they given laptops and not Chromebooks as all the other students are? Why are they allowed field trips when other schools' trips are cut? Maybe a little bit of extra money could be used for that basic skills. As Mr. Alrich stated, and I agree, AMSA students will thrive no matter where they're at. And yes, we will have basic skill students who will always need help, but here's the big but. With just the little bit of extra help or push, we might see some of our basic skill students thrive and maybe become one of those AMSA students. But without that little bit of help, I feel like it's a student left behind. A big pet peeve of mine are the combined meetings. I'm not saying that every month you need two meetings, but I believe there are a few times when it's warranted. We're all busy and believe me, I understand about not wanting two separate meetings. But when you're making crucial decisions, such as the budget, don't you think you owe all of the stakeholders a chance to come and state their case? You may be pleasantly surprised that someone may say something that makes us, makes you think and want to investigate it. Only having combined meetings doesn't allow that to happen. When you were elected on the board, you took a note to represent all stakeholders and that includes teachers, taxpayers, and students, not just special interest groups. As a board member, you're going to make all kinds of decisions and there will be that one or two that you wish you couldn't have taken back. Mine was the turf. Voting for it was a huge mistake and after reflecting on it that night, I sent an email trying to change my vote, but I was told I could not. Therefore, I cannot go backwards, but I can move forward. However, when I made that vote, I was misinformed as to the fundraising that scarcely has taken place or that NFL grant that we never got. I would like to know why it seems that football is the only sport using it, as when I sat on the committee, I was advised four sports could use it, football, soccer, hockey, and All I'm asking is, please look into whatever's best for all of our students, not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cottisbody. Mr. Medio.
Just to correct you, Mrs. Cottisbody, the football team uses it, the midget league uses it, the blitz football team, that is, students from five to fourteen years old. Tonight, there was a lacrosse game there. If you go out there on Tuesday or Thursday, I believe, there are soccer, people playing there, the Vineland soccer girls' team uses it, the Vineland soccer boys' team uses it, and field hockey can use it if they want. I don't know if they use it or not. But to say that it's used by the football team all week is completely wrong. And there's one thing I'm sorry about with the turf. I'm sorry we couldn't put more turf fields in.
As far as the turf goes, um, I consider that now a, a interesting commodity for the district, where I'm going to be asking our new BA, that should be a gigantic revenue maker for us. So you have a piece like that, turn it into something that can go back into our district. We saw what we're cutting in our maintenance budget. That's an athletic field. I would love to see some of that funding that we could make for that. It's the, that alternative way to generate revenue. I remember a couple of years back, we laughed about, nobody's going to want to put a sign on the side of the bus. Thousand bucks later, I said, hey, man, it's really working. Now we're into the ten thousands, I believe. So no idea is considered a stupid idea, in my opinion. So again, that's something where you go on our website, you have access to our email addresses. Just feed me some good stuff and I will do my best to make sure it can happen through the committee structure that we have set up here in this district. So just put my two cents out there. Yes.
I'm going to make a, a comment and I'm going to actually, um, it kind of sparked a conversation from, uh, Mrs. Weber and Mrs. Cottisbody, uh, both in, in the area of, uh, children that have special needs or children that require some basic skills. I, I think that, yeah, there's two things that struck me and, and both, um, both comments are, are correct, but there was a comment made by our, our business administrator tonight in the budget presentation, that principals are going to be given, uh, some alternative way to supplement the cut down on subs. And the reality of that is, is that the basic skills teachers that you cut, the ones that are going to be remaining, are going to go into the classroom, the sub for people that we can't get in the current vendor that we have. It's totally unacceptable. We, I, I think if you're realistic in your, uh, one of the boots on the ground, that you'll agree that getting someone the sub for the amount of money that's being paid, what we're essentially getting is a person that is going to babysit. So the idea would then be take a classroom teacher that can go step right in, do the lesson plan. I get that. Now, the problem exists that you now have a basic skills class that's not covered. So when you look at, um, the long-term solution is, is that if we have basic skills kids that we can get up to another level and get them at another reading level or another math level, that is going to be one step further to completing a successful high school education. Maybe going to trade school, maybe going to college, uh, maybe doing AMSA, whatever, whatever it's going to be. So the, the problem I have with the budget is that it's targeting a specific group of children in our district that need a lot of help. And if you're going to cut them and then use those teachers to sub in for the teachers that are taking off for illnesses or whatever, it is going to create even a bigger problem. Um, it's the one part of the budget that I'm have, I'm struggling with, is that, uh, cutting these basic skill teachers. I, I can do the math. I know what the average salary is. It was brought up tonight that, um, we should worry about people that are making ten thousand, fifteen thousand, twenty, that's not a lot of money. And I agree in that context, except that there's a thirty-five thousand dollar benefit package going along with that. So it's much more than a ten, fifteen, or twenty thousand dollar salary. It's a way to do business. So my goal, and it's, and I've been very clear with it, is that we should not affect the classroom function as little as we can throughout, um, this budget process. So our focus should be classroom-centered. And I hear that the budget is focused around that way, but when you're cutting basic skills teachers, um, and I, I don't, there's alternatives out there. And I think what we've been trying to do and what frustrates me a bit is the flexib, or lack of flexibility to give and take. So it got put out there that we are against AMSA. I believe that the only question I asked and made a statement was, is that how can you make a decision on a program that you don't know how much it costs? So can we please get the numbers? Because we found that there was some overspending going on in transportation that frankly was unacceptable and should have been caught by the district and not a board member. So we're not the professional people working, but yet we're expected to make the vote to go along with it. So I'm struggling on whether or not I can do that when we don't see some different creative ways that we can have our AMSA programs, have our special ed teachers, have our child study teachers, and try to come together and figure out, how can we best do that? And what we've been told is that countless hours have been put in doing this by the professionals and that is true. That's a true statement. It's just where we differ at is that the wants and the needs, as Ms. Morello referenced, is the true statement. So what do we want? What do we need? What's the absolute? And I think we absolutely have to focus on capturing an education for all children in the district. That's our goal. And we would be almost criminal, I'll coin that phrase even though it wasn't fair to point that to the board, we would be almost criminal to forget about those kids that are in flux, that if we don't help them now, they're going to end up being a society problem that down the road, the criminal justice system, social service system is going to deal with. So our goal should be bring them up and push them up. And that's what I struggle about with the budget. It's not so much, you know, I, I don't want to have to raise taxes, but that, that's inevitable. Our health care benefits and stuff that we can't control are going through the roof. But, um, that's what I struggle with the budget. So your points are well-taken, um, with our student population that needs a little bit more of our help. And no one ever said, we're going to cut AMSA. We were just talking about, well, if we found this, what else is there? Can there be flexibility? Can we do something with the scheduling, the bus and transportation? It never came up about, is that a valuable program? Because obviously it is a valuable program. So I just wanted to clarify that, because my name was brought up in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to come to the podium?
Can I speak again?
You've already had.
Well, it, but it's only one bite of the apple.
Did you speak on public, which one did you speak on, Big?
Um.
Budget or public?
Charter.
Yes.
She definitely didn't take her five minutes. I just think she could give her another couple of minutes.
Yes, I have a problem with that.
Yes?
Yes.
I want to talk about subs. I heard you say that subs are babysitters. I know, I do my job. I have a special needs student right now that I turned around. He used to run around the school. He's a very smart child, but he didn't have the discipline. I turned that around. You might get subs that don't care, but not every sub. I know I worked for the district for ten years and I cared when I did my job. And I don't like when I hear subs are babysitters. No, they're not. Some might be, but you can't classify all.
Good, good evening, everyone. My name is Bonnie Henderson Martin and I'm a citizen of Vineland. I have a thirteen-year-old grandson who is presently in the AMSA program. Uh, I'm raising him. I adopted him. He's a child of addicts. Um, he has numerous, uh, benefit from the AMSA program and it's a valuable thing for him. I did express my feelings about be, them all being put in Johnstone and, before it was even done, because I felt like children needed to be with all different kinds of children. But the, that's, that, that's gone now. It's done. We've already done, put these, we've al, it's already been done. The kids are all in the Johnstone school now together and there's rumors going around and the kids are upset. He's very nervous and he believes that, he's heard words that the, the AMSA program is going to end. My main comment tonight is that as a parent who's an older parent, again, um, my two chil, other children are grown and went through Vineland school successfully. Um, I try to keep up with the board happenings and I try to keep up on what's happening and where the spend, spending's going, but from my point of view, where I stand, when I go into the website and I look at expenditures and then I look at committee meetings, like for instance, finance, the minutes from the finance committee are so limited to three or four sentences that it tells me nothing. There was a discussion about cafeteria spending, period. What was discussed about it? So that when I come to a board meeting, I am prepared to be able to comment to you about how I feel about these certain issues. Curriculum changes, there, we have no idea as parents, what discussions happen in those committees when there are major decisions being made and then all of a sudden, the week before the, the budget is going to be approved, there's a million things that we find out all of a sudden through word of mouth, Facebook, all the wrong places, and then the budget comes out and they're just flat numbers that mean absolutely nothing to me. I don't know how much it costs to transport a child from one place to another, but I understand that even in my own home, prices are going up and I'm a taxpayer. I'm not opposed to having a tax increase so that the kids get a quality education, but it's really hard to swallow when you find out that, I was told when the AMSA program started, that there was grant funding for that. I can't find out on the website, who, how, what grant funding? Where did the funding come from? Who's paying for that? I was told when the, the field turf was being done and it was going to be funded, that there was going to be grant funding. I need to know as a taxpayer, where my tax dollars are going and find out what board members are representing my values and voting for my values in these committees, so that I know who to support at the next, at the next election. It's, it's very simple. I can't judge your character and your value as a board member, as a voter, and as a taxpayer, if I don't get the information about where you stand on the issues. And every one of you that ran said, I stand for transparency, but there is no transparency. I'm standing on the outside and I'm telling you, I have a college education, I've been published in two national journals, and I consider myself a fairly intelligent person and I was unable to decipher what this budget meant in dollars and cents to me, the taxpayer. And so I'm asking, when you have this retreat, if you would please look at the committee minute, meeting minutes. If you need a good stenographer or you need someone that's going to sit down and take me, meetings, I will volunteer, because we need to have sunshine on our money. We need to know as a taxpayer, where the dollars and cents are going and what the values of each one of you people that were entrusted with our tax dollars to be spent for the good of our, at the education of our children. How, I want to know. I'm, and I'm seriously interested in becoming a, I, I want a seat at the table as a taxpayer. I want to know that my interests are being met and if they aren't, I'll elect another board member. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. DeSantis, can you just clarify the structure for our minutes, please?
The sunshine law requires minutes of a meeting with the Board of Education by a majority. Committee minutes are not subject to Oprah. Committee meetings often involve maybe two members of the board, several members of administration. Things are discussed there. The committee has no authority, no power to act, to do anything. If one board member or one administrator makes a comment at a committee meeting, and then that becomes part of minutes, then it becomes part of the rumor mill, because the board is going to do this, or the board isn't going to do that. So the committee process isn't really intended to frustrate transparency. It's basically a work in progress. When the matter reaches the board, then that is the opportunity for full-blown transparency on a matter that the board is being asked to deliberate on. Otherwise, 90% of what gets discussed at a committee may not see the light of day to the board, and just creates unnecessary discussion because it doesn't reflect the full board's concern on that issue.
Thank you. And what happens with our board meetings, and I went to this, what do we call this? The combined meeting format. And it was, the idea, from what I understand, is it's to streamline the process. I come from the work session style, where things that you discuss in these committee meetings come out of the committee, and then you have thorough discussion that first Wednesday of the month. And that's where the community gets a better spin on it, but the way it's structured, I do think it shuts it out, kind of. And this board, when we first had our meeting in January, Mr. Sabran had definitely brought this to the attention, to myself, and we had discussion on that, but the current flavor of the majority of the board was to keep things the way they are. I think Ms. Cottis Patti spoke about this. You can probably look at your meetings like December, that can be a combined style. January, a combined style. February, March, April, May, June, business. Then your summer rolls in, you have July, and then we usually do a double-meeting-type setup in August. September rolls in, school starts, so it's really one meeting. So I think we might have to discuss that as part of some things on our retreat there, because I do, I understand the convenience factor of what the board was telling me, but business is business, and discussion is discussion. And it's very hard when a board member hears from someone at the podium at the end of it, "Mr. Merkley came up with a great idea concerning our committee reports, to have them before public comments, so at least you're more aware of what's happening." But still, we're voting on it that night, correct? So when we're doing that sometimes, it almost gives the perception, this is what I've been told by many in the public, "You heard us, but your decision was already made up." And you don't have to clap, but that's the perception. And what bothers me, that's the perception of the taxpayer that did put us in these seats. So it tashes me, I have to figure out a better way to make the taxpayer happy in conjunction with my board members, so business can continue to be conducted in a proper format. And...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I made clear what I was saying. By the time I get here and aware of the issue...
Yes.
It's done. There's already been...
I understand, you already came to the podium, and I, again, I understand what you were saying, but through the whole process, many people have come to me about several things that were discussed tonight, and realistically, we're four board meetings into this, where the original style would have been eight meetings into it, where that discussion takes place more. I don't know if anybody wants, Mr. Sabran, if you want to chime in? Absolutely.
Yes, and I intend to bring forward that proposal again, to go back to the old meeting format. And there are a bunch of things that are different now. There's a new board leadership. We have another new board member. And I can tell you that although, and I understand Ms. Morello hyperbolizing with the word, that lack of transparency and communication in both directions can lead one to wonder what's going on and how decisions are being made. As I can tell you, I felt out of the loop, as you always would like to say, many times. A lot of information wasn't being passed back and forth. Difficult time reaching and having dialogue with people that I needed to talk about. And so that's how we get from there to here. And moving forward, you know, the whole idea of the work session format was a proposal would be made, and questions would be asked. Sometimes we had to wait for information before we could, you know, even make an intelligent vote. And then, you know, it was all brought out at the actual meeting. Now, I don't know if there's enough support to make it happen this time or not, but I guarantee I'm going to bring it up.
And again, this is kind of more retreat discussion, and we did have a retreat scheduled for February, but the one time it snowed, bam, we had to cancel it, and this was our next available time with our school board rep. But I don't want to get away from the discussion, which we're here for our public hearing on the budget. We kind of went off on a little tangent there. But does anyone else have anything from the public that they would like to share?
She was on the first part.
You were on the first part.
I was, yes. So to clarify, I can speak on...
Anything besides...
Any...
Yes.
Okay. It's closely related, so I'll do my best. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your name.
Me?
Yes.
It's Alrich.
Alrich, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Alrich mentioned comments about subs and how the district is having trouble filling those positions. Oftentimes, special ed teachers are being pulled to fill those positions, because there's two teachers in a classroom. And I'm cautioning you folks against continuing this policy. 504 aides are on the chopping block. A special ed teacher is on the chopping block. An entire child study team is on the chopping block. If you continue to remove those services, you're going to see increased behaviors, and you're going to see a lot of increased problems from the students that aren't getting the services that they're used to. I don't have a solution, because it's not my job to have that solution. But I'm telling you that you need to figure out a way to make sure that those vacancies, those sub vacancies are filled, because a special ed teacher should not be going into sub in a regular ed classroom. It's not their job. Their job is to fill the gap that a special ed student has because of whatever disability they're struggling with, so that they can learn alongside regular ed students. So, yeah, that's my little, I'm going to hop off the soapbox now.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else this evening?
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Ruchel, and the board. We seem to be debt-blind at all levels of government, waiting for the next generation to take over whatever we haven't decided. So you do have new board members here, but you have some that still have the same attitude toward what they did in the past. The past is gone, as been emphasized tonight. There's going to have to be changes. You can't just keep repeating and doing the things that you've done in the past. We've had five superintendents in 11 years. We've had four business managers, over at least five or six. Tonight, for the first time, Mr. Merkley gave me hope that the budget will be more transparent, that we've been doing things wrong, and they have hurt people, employees and students. And they are totally unacceptable to continue in any form, whether it means you have to learn how to read a funding account statement versus a profit or loss, or rely on new ideas from people other than just the public, but from the people that are on the staff. I think school principals are being asked to not defend at this podium some of the things that they may not agree with the central administration. I applaud the effort that made the central administration have a home itself, but it's a management issue too, about decentralization and centralization, and who really should be making the input to the central administration. The people in the field and the different buildings. I believe the principal should have more say on hiring, and I hope some of this can happen. But I do realize there have been a lot of improvements made in the time that we've had all this chaos. Mr. Alrich, you one time mentioned that he wished the state would take over this district. If anybody still has that thought, then we have the wrong people in the wrong positions, and some of them may be sitting at this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Let the minutes reflect, that was Mr. Lieber. Do we have anyone else this evening? Seeing none, this is the part of the meeting where I look to my left and right to see if there's any board member discussion on this budget. I will start at the right. Mr. Fiocchi?
Just some general points. I mean, at the end of the day, we're in a $14 million shortfall. I can guarantee you that nobody up here wants to cut positions, programs, but we have to do some drastic cuts. As Mr. English said, we would love to have additional input from the public. We've had a lot more than we had in my past two years, so please, come up. You often give us ideas that we don't think of. We rely on your support. And also, we're extremely lucky to have Mr. Merkley, so thank you for your support in this past month.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes. Ms. Spinelli?
Well, we're in a really tough situation, and over the next two days, you know, all of us here will be working together, and I think we're all on board with the basic skills teachers. As a parent, I agree. You know, I wish I could change it, and I can tell you that I'm going to work really hard to get those spots back.
Thank you, Ms. Spinelli. Mr. Medio?
It's very hard to address a $14 million shortfall that's been created without causing a lot of hard feelings. However, when I got on this board two and a half years ago, I made a recommendation, and it wasn't followed. If it would have been followed, you wouldn't be anywhere near as bad as this is now. I'm going to make that recommendation again at the June board meeting. Mr. English put it on the agenda. We need a hiring freeze. We have almost 2,000 employees. Before we hire anybody else to jeopardize those jobs, we need to determine whether or not we need those jobs. Every job. So I'm not going to say anybody's job or anything else. I'm just going to say what they use the term widget makers. If you have 275 widget makers, can you get by with 250? Can you get by with 170? I don't know. But that's something that has to be determined. And that's never been determined. And that's why you went from a $9 million surplus to a $14 million deficit. That's why you had a $23 million turnaround. And now you have people who are going to lose their jobs. You have problems that have been created by continuously using non-recurring funds to fund recurring expenses, and that's got to change, and that's got to stop. You can't continue to repeat the mistakes of the past and expect it to be changed. You have to change your methods, you have to change what you're doing, you have to change your outlook. And another thing with that, you said about superintendent evaluation?
Yes.
I'm sure Mr. Burke saw that I was on my phone tonight. He was nice enough not to mention it, as he has in the past. And what I was doing was reading an email that mentioned my name in it, and I think I've decided I'm going to be involved in the superintendent evaluation and all recommendations. There's a bill, there's discussion about changing that. So I'm going to put my name out there, and if that involves being brought up before the Ethics Commission to make a case out of it, I'm more than willing to do that. I don't feel I have any conflict whatsoever. I have a grown son who has no contact whatsoever with central administration on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis. I see no reason why I can't do the most important job every school member has, which all of you know, you've been told that, it's been put in writing, your most important job is working with the superintendent when there's a vacancy, filling it with the best possible person. So I'm going to do that this time around. I'm going to fulfill the law and not worry too much about the Ethics Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Medio. Mr. Sabran?
Beyond the deep concern I have for the financial situation that we're in, and how we got here, and the impact that it's having on the people who work here, and as a former employee, I can tell you how deeply I am concerned about that. I'm even more concerned about the possibility of this being a repetitive problem. So looking forward, we need to have a budget and financial structure that's based on the programs that we have that are sustainable, unless we can find new and innovative ways to generate more income. Thank you.
Mr. Sabran, just let me ask you a question. I believe it was you early on that had asked about budget of a whole, correct?
I did, and that was, there's nine people sitting up here, and that got shot down several times. So again, the public has led to feel as though there's a lack of transparency, because everything is done in a way where you don't know about it until you're forced to make a decision on voting for it. Now, I understand that if you're in a room with some people that are employees, and they're talking about, "Well, how are we going to get out of this mess? And how are we going to fix what's wrong? And who's going to have to go?" And you're, you know, contemplating multiple scenarios for fixing the problem, you might say, "Well, what about if we eliminate a child study team? Or what about if we close that school? Or what about if we do this, or that, or the other?" And if that gets out into the general population and the general school employee base, then, you know, right away, the rumor mill goes around and around, and everyone's all upset, and it may not be the cut that you had contemplated. The flip side to that is where we are right now, where people are standing out there at the podium and talking about that they feel that they've been disenfranchised by the board for a lack of transparency and a lack of information being given to them, and they're ready to rise up in righteous indignation. And they should be, because that's in essence where we're at. I'm just saying that it's not right, and it has to change, and it has to change really, really soon. I'd like to be part of that process.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Silva? I'm putting you on the spot, buddy.
First board meeting, it's a lot to swallow. Just looking forward to participate and being part of this budget process going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alrich?
Just a couple of things, Mr. English. One is, just kind of like a question for our BA. Since the budget, preliminary budget, has been approved by the executive county superintendent that included our tax levy and the proposed budget cuts for a balanced budget, if the board were to return next week, or Wednesday, actually, a no vote by proxy, the county superintendent, since they've approved the budget, it comes back to us from her, approved? Is my question, and I'll continue my comments.
You're asking if this board doesn't provide an approved budget to the county? If the county then, because they've already preliminary-approved it, if they're just going to stamp it approved? I have not... I have not been through the process, but that's a good thought. I would imagine there's dialogue that takes place as to why the board did not approve it, when they approved it the first time preliminarily, and then they didn't approve it in finality. I don't believe it's a rubber stamp, I'm sure there are questions that are answered, but I haven't been through the process.
Okay. That's a fair answer. I think what we were told at the preliminary meeting, that we were basically setting the tax levy and that the budget was flexible and could be changed, is what the information that, you know, I personally voted for. I voted for the tax levy on an unfinished product, a preliminary product. So with that being said, I think that the board, as a majority regarding the combined meetings, whether you support them or don't, they've spoken on that issue, and one of the things that we agreed upon, that if there was an item that was questionable, that it could be put off to the next month. Now, in the other format with the work session, it would only be put off a week. So, you know, Mr. Sabrana can put that forward again and can take it to another vote, but I believe it was a pretty solid majority that, you know, voted for the combined meeting format, with some flexibility, and, you know, we always have the ability to do that. I would just wish and hope that if that circumstance comes up, that we do put on the brakes, but my experience is that we don't. So I would, you know, defer to the majority on this, but the combined meetings can lead to some, I guess, perceived lack of transparency, but I don't believe it's a lack of transparency, it's just the way the consent agenda is set up, and then if there's, if they know at the agenda-setting meeting that there's going to be a problem with an issue, it should be put off so that there can be a full discussion, that it can go through committees. The problem with, I've sat through one board that did a budget as a whole process. Frankly, I didn't like it. It was clunky, it didn't move around. And when you have a committee format, and we are very flexible, that I will give up my seat on a committee so another board member can sit on that committee, I've been on the board a long time, we have flexibility on that, but it's a brainstorming session. So what would happen if, just like the AMPSA rumor that got started, somebody passes a rumor, goes to social media, got the board's cutting AMPSA, and that's definitely not what was said, but the perception in the public, and then the parents, and then the teachers tell the kids, and the kids get all upset. That's where your pressure comes from, folks. It's not from us. Children don't watch the Board of Education meeting, okay? It's the teachers, it's the parents that are saying something, because if they're watching a board meeting, God bless them, but I think they should be studied. So that's how rumors lead to that. So in a committee approach, things that we discuss, you know, if there's three or four board members, and you know that's not going to fly, because, you know, now you share that information, then it's something that's just a brainstorming session, quick ideas. What about this? What about that? Well, that's how that format works, and I think for efficiency, the function that the committee format is, is good. The minutes can't be detailed because a committee doesn't have any power to make a vote on any item like Mr. Santos said. So, you know, I wouldn't be for a budget of the whole process. I went through it once, Mr. Franceschini was president at the time, and I think Mr. Burke was around, and I didn't care for it. So I know personally, I won't be voting for something like that, but that's my own personal opinion, I'm one board member. Just like I wanted, I didn't, wasn't for the combined meetings when I came back, but I was one board member. So that's the power that we have. We each have an individual voice, and because there's no comment, and I'm not going to, you know, when you're broad-stoking, I apologize to Vicki, I didn't mean babysitting in a broad stroke, I was trying to emphasize a point, that in a lot of cases, we're not having the instruction that a normal teacher that's certified and has a teaching degree is delivering. So I apologize, and thank you for putting me in my place. I shouldn't have used that term, and I apologize for that. But I was just trying to make the greater point that these kids, when you take them out, they are losing a service that they need, and I think that was my, my general point. So, you know, I'm not satisfied, you know, with the budget, obviously, but a lot of work has gone into it, and obviously, the person at the county who is the executive county superintendent who granted these broad-range powers by the state of New Jersey, has already, I saw letters, approved it and signed off on it, you're good to go. So I'm struggling whether or not to support it, but what I know we can do, and what we have the power to do, is policy, is approving hires. That falls in the final cut, falls into our realm. Yeah, it really does. So I think that we all need to have, take a deep breath, and we all want the same goals. How are we going to get there being $14 million down? And why we got there? Okay, we got there because of a multitude of reasons why, but we're not why now, we're here today, and we have to approve it. So I'm struggling on whether or not to support the budget that's already been approved by a level above us, and maybe that sways a vote that this gets returned to the county, but then we kind of get away from what our role is, is to approve the budget. So I'm really conflicted, and I appreciate everybody that came up, you know, it's always good to hear from the public, but I'm really, really dissatisfied about how certain things go out, and that we have our staff kind of contributing to stress on students, since the last thing that I want, being a lifelong public servant and having, you know, my wife being in the district over 21 years. So that's the last thing I want to do, and I apologize if anybody took that the wrong way, but it won't deter me to ask questions about what things cost. And I think that's all that I know I personally was asking, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olrich. Usually I don't ask this, but as BA, and this being the public hearing, you've started with your presentation, and then you've heard from your fellow, the board members and the public, do you have anything to add?
Actually, I do. As the chief financial officer, I just want to discuss what the process looks like, and what we can and can't do. When I look at the budget, I'm looking at operational costs and reoccurring revenues, and obviously, I came here late, this board had already voted on this budget, coming from another school district of equal size. I came from a district with over a $200 million budget. Operational costs and reoccurring revenues equals what I would say would be a balanced budget. What happens is, you have to identify what the reoccurring revenues are. The district is in this situation because there's always going to be a non-reoccurring revenue, that's that carrot that hangs in front of you, that you want to take and put into operations. Right now, you're feeling the pain from that. The state does give you mechanisms to hold on to that money that you would put into operations, and hold on to it in a different way, and use in future years. So my goal over this next year is to make sure that we're not in this situation next year, even though I already can tell you, because I see what the numbers are, and you can easily project more than one year, that it's $8 million in the hole next year. I've already tried to put mechanisms in place by thinking where things are going to fall in the following year, where we can begin to save money, I've identified a few areas already, to try and minimize that $8 million so it doesn't hit us operationally. But the goal is that your reoccurring revenues cover your operational costs. I do have a rough draft of a plan to present, to finance, and I probably will polish it up over the next month or two and do a full presentation during the summer months, because there will be difficult decisions that I will propose as the chief financial officer of the school that I believe need to be made. Now, obviously, Dr. Gruccio is the chief academic officer of the school, and overall, the boss for all district employees, so we will have lots of conversation regarding this. And obviously, Dr. Gruccio is a long-term employee of Vion, so she knows many of the reasons why things are the way they are. So sometimes, I can propose things, but there are reasons why they can't be done. So I'm hopeful that we don't continue to be in this situation. Unfortunately, I believe we're going to be in this situation at least one more year, and I do know that we're at least one more year in, but I think we can dig out of it with some changes that need to be made. I'm pretty sure if we can stomach the necessary changes for one year, that we can reset the paradigm on what operational costs look like, and that we can begin to focus on putting money back into the classroom. And that's my ultimate goal, is to support the academic programs for academic achievement. You want to get as much money available into the classroom for the teachers and the principals to achieve, you know, academic achievement for the students. So I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity just to pontificate a little bit on that process, but I'm acutely aware of the issue that we're dealing with now, what's going to come next year, and that I make sure I give the necessary information to the board for them to make decisions on what is going to be actual facts, and that they're supported by real data. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merkley. Dr. Gruccio.
I'd just like to thank everybody who took the time to give input this evening, and I would like to thank the central office staff and all of our department heads for the many hours that they put into the decisions that were made on the budget. As I've said many times, none of us are happy with all of the things in there, but tough decisions had to be made. And we do work in central office as a team, it's not one person making the decisions. We're happy to have Mr. Merkley on board, a fresh set of eyes always is helpful, and we will continue to have conversations as we move forward to do what is best for our children, that's what we're all here for. And that's what we keep at the forefront whenever we make our decisions, at least this team does. And so we will continue to do our very best, we thank you for your input. And finally, I would like to welcome Alex to the board, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you, Dr. Gruccio. I'd like to take a moment to really thank the board members to the left and right, and central administration, the public, because if we're going to preach that we need to be all in this together, we really have to, it's really, it's got to be 100% buying, you can't have one person not buying in, because then that one piece of negativity just can grow into something that's enormous. Mr. Merkley, pretty much like you, I know the process, you know the process, but things are different than where you came from, and things are different since the two years I was away. The budget of a whole thing has always been an interesting concept to me, because I think tonight, this has been our best discussion, but it's the 11th hour, as we did it as a whole. Maybe you agree, maybe you disagree. There's certain things that happen with the budget of whole, we don't have to bring everything, but if it's a monthly-type discussion that can maybe paraphrase what we discussed, I think it's something better than nothing. I'm concerned, as Captain Olrich said, I wrote down here, the county and the basic skills question. The county has jammed down boards' throats year after year, T and E, thorough and efficient education, and that basic skills piece is a huge factor. Mrs. Arena, a couple of meetings ago, gave us some factual numbers that kind of had this board thinking, and it was the amount of special needs type student we have with the basic skills versus the type of AMPSA student we have, and then she gave us a student-teacher ratio that kind of had us thinking a little bit there. Some of my process on that thinking was, and I'm just going to use a raw number of 22, if there's 22 AMPSA teachers for 200 kids, can we possibly do 11 AMPSA teachers and give 11 of that teaching position back to a basic skills? So you shared the load, kind of, that type of thing. We're not closing the program, but it's not realistic, this board's going to be thinking, the days of nine kids in a classroom? This district applied for a waiver when I was on the board in 200, last one was it, '16, Dr. Gruccio? A waiver for 27 kids in a classroom?
Just applied this year again.
So realistically, are there 27 kids in that classroom? That's the questions that we're asking. The style of that program, I admire. On my way out the first time, Mr. Fry was just putting it together, and it was phenomenal, what I, I saw the vision. But back then, we didn't have a shortfall like we currently have. I don't think the program's going to go away, like I said, but I just believe that we have to share the load with something like that, so it looks fair across the board, because whether the misconception is coming from, when I was running again, I heard from the teachers and the principals, what they honestly thought about it. For some reason, they can't portray that at the podium, and that's, I don't, that's how it goes, but I did hear what they had to say, and I'll continue to fight that battle. But when you think about that basic skills piece, it is that last step before some type of classification that you can't turn back from, if I'm understanding that correctly, and it bothers me that we are taking that away. We all can agree to disagree about basic skills, but I believe when we had that discussion at our meeting where we did the 4% increase and everything, we were looking for the word flexibility. And the reason I'm having, if we were voting tonight, I didn't see enough flexibility with that. I had thorough discussion with Mr. Fry, and he's met me halfway with a lot of my ideas, but it still hasn't caught the traction. And I think if it doesn't happen this year, $8 million, no, we laid the foundation for just one small thing. I have a list of 17 serious cuts that are going to have to happen next year, so the things that we're hearing as rumors are going to be, unfortunately, I think, a lot more realistic next year, but I can guarantee you, with me involved, with the word transparency, you will be aware of it. I've asked Dr. Rossi, you want to kill the rumor mill about hires? Reduction and force everybody. Bam! Now everybody's on alert. That's it, let's find something new to possibly complain about, who knows? But the bottom line is, the shortfalls and the money is what drives the school district. Tough decisions, Dr. Gruccio is not happy. We battle because she's telling me why, and I'm telling her no, and she's not in no way in favor of this, nor is anyone before Mr. Merkley got here. Mr. Mustarow, you know, it was a tough time to become an interim, but he dove in there, and it just wasn't pretty. The finance committee, we've all worked hard, but at the end of the day, the one thing that stood the same was $14 million shortfall. The crazy thing, though, is, we knew it was coming. Not one board member up here shouldn't have known it was coming. I heard someone say tonight about they would like to know the cost of the AMPSA. I will research who voted on supporting the AMPSA move and didn't ask for a cost then. I would hope it wasn't a 9-0 vote without a serious cost spreadsheet. I would hope it wasn't a 9-0 vote without a serious cost spreadsheet showed on what a new academic program at this building was going to cost, and if it, if they didn't receive it, I don't know how it was a 9-0 vote, but that's, well, I'll redo that research this evening. As far as this budget process goes, I just have to ask you one more time, Mr. Merkley, so I understand it. The county has approved, and this board definitely believed that it was a fluid document, correct? Correct? To the left of me, correct down there?
It is, it was and is a fluid document. I can only say this, that we have a new county superintendent, so I don't think any of us really know how this process will go, but in the past, when this board voted the budget down, it was not a rubber stamp, we were asked many questions, and they did not get back to us the next day. We had to provide a lot of information before the budget moved forward.
And I believe that if I'm going to continue to practice what I have preached for years, if indeed this board does not choose to support it, the product did not get sold 100% to the school board. And we are the custodians, as I've said in the past, of the taxpayers' money, and just as Mr. Ulrich said, it is a tough decision, it is, it is a tough decision for me as well, but just like we had to welcome Mr. Merkley to this mess, we're going to welcome possibly our county superintendent to Cumberland County and to really see what we are dealing with. Mr. Walker, you asked, you asked, who is fighting for the school district? We do not get paid, but we are surely working hard as board members to try and get it as great as possible. Dr. Gruccio's been communicating with several different political groups, but for some reason, we have an asterisk on us, and I don't know why. I would love to invite them to really see what we are demographically, scholastically, and everything, but maybe it's time, I'm hoping, that if indeed the county superintendent sees that we had a board that approved something, but now possibly they didn't approve it, that maybe that's that person we're looking for to go knock on that door and maybe camp out overnight, because I think the knocking on the door is not working. So, it's going to be an interesting process over the next 48 hours for the Vion Board of Education and everyone. My last question for you, Mr. Merkley, the last official date that this budget can have any change to it is?
I believe the budget calendar says a final budget by the board must be presented by May 14th.
May 14th. So, I'm going to ask each one of my board members to really take a long, hard look in the mirror tonight and remember what you learned in Governance 1, Governance 2, Governance 3, Financial, Governance 4, for the ones that have been here that long, and the feelings need to stay in the parking lot. This is, it's time to make the right decision. With that being said, do I have a motion for adjournment this evening?
So moved.
All in favor? Good night and thank you for coming.